Roll call. Mr. Ben Furell, present.
Ms. Horowitz.
Present.
Mr. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Lorianzo.
Present.
And the chairman, Mr. Nod is here as well. Mr. Reposer is absent. Next item on the agenda is meeting minutes. We have minutes from both December and January. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second? Second. Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of both December twenty first, twenty twenty-three, and January eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. On favor? Aye, opposed.
Did everybody get an opportunity to read them, particularly the January minutes?
January ones are the first ones we got.
You read them?
Yeah.
And you're all happy with them?
We're good with them.
Okay.
The next agenda items of public notice, zoning enforcement officer administrative review. First item, and for anyone interested, these are requests, variances, et cetera, that can be administratively approved, but they have to be advertised. If there are any butters or opposing parties, it will then become a hearing for the board. If not, they're administratively approved. So the first one is petition by Francis France, fifty-four Hicks Lane, Tax Assessor's Map, eighteen lot ninety-five. Is there anyone either online or in the audience, in the audience that is opposed to that application? Seeing none, I assume it's approved.
None noted online either.
All right. The next one is a petition by Thomas Kelly, forty Fountain Avenue, Tax Assessor's Map, twenty lot three seventy-one. Do we have any butters or interested parties opposed to that application? Seeing none. We'll move on to our gender of old business, which is the petition of Teleria Real Estate Holdings LLC, Tax Assessor's Map forty-three, lot five, seeking a height dimensional variance on their property, otherwise known as One Little Harbor Landing.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Steve McGilvery for Teleria, doing business as Hinkley. It's our application for a height variance for a proposed rack storage building on the site. And I know you all have the the application. The building is going to exceed the thirty-five foot limit for height. And I'd like to introduce Chris Ruling, who's a representative of Teleria, to come up and and explain the project to you folks.
Well, before you go anywhere, Mr. McGilvery, I understand there's a change to this petition?
There is. It's they've redesigned the building very slightly to make it the overall area smaller. So it's actually less overall relief, although the the height relief request is the same. But what they did is they redesigned the building. Instead of a longer building, it's now square, which allows for more efficient storage of boats on racks, is my understanding.
You're saying the height's the same?
The height is the same.
See, here's my issue. When did we get this?
You got this this morning.
Really?
Yes.
And when is the meeting?
This meeting is tonight.
Right, and why wasn't this submitted back when?
Well, the redesign happened very recently. That's
Okay.
So when when I got it, you got it. And because it's it's actually for less relief than what's requested.
Okay, so.
At least in terms of massing. Seemed appropriate to give it to you folks.
If it's the same height.
Yep.
Then there's no change.
There's no change to the variance request. That's correct.
Okay. All right. So it's still, the request is still for a twenty-foot height variance, correct?
That's correct, Mr. R.
In the future, it would be greatly appreciated if one or two things happens. Okay? Either send it in the day of and request a continuance.
Yep.
Okay? To at least give the board ample time, because some members of the board work and don't have time to check it. Maybe at the end of the day, and it could be a substantial thing. Okay?
I could tell you that I understand from a personal level, I served on the zoning board in Middletown for twelve years. And so I know what it's like to finish your work, drive here and get hit with something new, and I apologize for that. It really was a last-minute design change, but it's important that we move forward because they're trying to put this online as as quickly as possible. Mr. Ruling can explain that. So that's why we didn't look for a continuance. And if it was a material change, if we were asking for more relief, we certainly would have done that.
But again, I For the record, it's the identical relief as what was originally proposed.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruling?
Sir, good evening.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Chris Ruling, ninety-one Bellevue Avenue in Tiverton.
How do you spell your last name?
R U H L I N G.
Thank you, Mr. Ruling.
Mr. Ruling, can you just, we don't have to do, you know, formal examination here, but just start off with explaining your role at Teleria Hinkley, and then just explain the project if you can.
Sure. I've been, I'm the general manager, been there for a little over a year now. And I've run large marinas for the Brewery Outyard Group for thirty-five years. We've designed this building, some of, and I'd like to speak to the the last-minute change in the in the in the dimensions of the building was to somewhat work through some of the stumbling that we had with the Weaver Cove folks. So it was an effort to to appease some of their their requests early on. So there was some of that, and it took some time to kind of get through that. So I apologize for that delay in getting it to you prior to. Anyway, some of the reason why we're trying to get this building in place, number one, it's a it's a unique site in that I think you're all familiar. It's been an industrial space for an awful long time. And with the opportunity, there's so little waterfront district opportunity, especially here in Portsmouth, to build to build this kind of a building. Second to that, we operate three other off-site buildings, the Vanguard Facility, Skater Park Facility, and the old Freedom Building in Middletown. And so we're trucking a lot of boats across all different parts of the town, different times and whatever. So it gives us the opportunity to bring our staff and people off off the roads, our trucks off the roads, bring it down to the trade level here on site. So it's certainly going to add a lot of efficiencies to our existing site while providing some additional jobs going forward. And we lose a lot of efficiencies and ultimately in time, some of the buildings that we currently are occupying and renting are no longer going to be be available going forward with some of the Skater Park is being developed for residential and 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 housing development there. So in time, that building is going to go away. So we're left with, you know, the opportunity ultimately to try and develop the building on site. We've identified certainly efficiencies by going to a rack building. It allows us to utilize a different equipment segment to store boats in a in a manner in which we we are not occupying a larger building footprint, but we're able to utilize the height in doing that. A good majority of the buildings that you find throughout the country, mostly Florida southern areas, are four and five racks high, kind of a minimal footprint and as measured against its efficiencies. Three, three levels is kind of where we where we need to land. We're trying to
Ruling, basically, it's dry stack storage, correct?
That's certain. Yes, sir.
Basically, take a boat with a fork truck usually with extended forks, pick it up, put it on the rack.
Exactly.
I used to run Ben Boat Basin when it was
Oh, so you're familiar.
Familiar with it.
Got it. Okay, it's very similar to that, at the Quonset facility, Mill Creek Marina.
Is, to the best of my knowledge, no one in the area that does dry stack storage indoors, is there?
There is. Well, Mill Creek Marina at Quonset, which is a safe harbor facility, they do, they're a pretty decent-sized rack facility there. There's two more additionally in Niantic, Connecticut. One's in Port, one's in Port Niantic. The second one is Niantic Bay Valet, I think, as they call it now. So, you know, there's added efficiencies in utilizing such a building for the services. We we currently employ almost two hundred and fifty people on site just in in technical all aspects of of a number of fifteen or to eighteen different disciplines. We're fortunate in that the site that we're occupying is one of the only sites in the whole Northeast and down through the East Coast that have the full capability of the multitude of trades that we employ. So we're 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 lucky to have that kind of a segment here in Portsmouth. And there there are skills that are slowly being lost throughout the country. So we're fortunate in that we have the ability to perpetuate that opportunity here in Portsmouth on that side.
So maybe you can explain why why the height? And after you do that, explain what are the buildings, what's the heights of the buildings around the proposed building?
The current heights of the buildings that we have on site, there are two or three now that are in excess of fifty feet, fifty-two feet, all of which occupy various trades and and storages of boats, none of which right now have racks in those buildings. The need for us to occupy the fifty-five feet allows for efficiencies, and it's expensive construction, the equipment's expensive. So it requires, there's a balance point financially where where it makes sense to have that height. So we've kept it to the to the height of, or the level of three racks as opposed to four and five, like I had mentioned throughout the rest of the country. I believe the NEB building is somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-some-odd feet. So we're, you know, we're trying to be respectful also of our neighbor Weaver Cove in the process.
So is it fair to say at thirty-five feet, it's not, it's not feasible?
It's it's feasible, but it's a, it's a, it's not at all efficient. So it really, really doesn't do much for us. We we do. I'd like to say, I know we had, we had put in for a master site approval of three buildings on site. Going forward, we'd still like to develop those opportunities on site, but those will not be asked for height variance. This will be the only building asked for height variance. The other buildings will maintain the height of thirty-five feet.
Any questions for them?
Will this be an active dry stack? In other words, my boat stacked there, I come down for the weekend, you drop it in the water. It's just during the off-season that boats will be stored there.
That's correct. We are just a, we're just a service site. We're not a marina and don't operate that way. We quite often don't even see a lot of our customers. They're captain-based and and so on and so forth, and we and we deliver a good majority of the boats. So it will be, I'll say, at some level seasonally, in terms of the majority of its use. Alternatively, it'll it'll be likely be active through the course of the year, but internally, just to have the boats moved up and down so we can service them.
Okay. Questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ruling, the fifty-five feet gives you the ability to stack three boats high?
Three high, yes, sir.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I have a question as well.
Sure.
No.
It's a, you know, I look at these zoning ordinances, and it preserves the character of the town and the area. That whole area there abuts a residential area. From what I have seen and know, they haven't been exactly the best neighbors as far as lighting is concerned.
Uh, Mr. Lorianzo?
Yeah.
That's strictly hearsay, number one. Number two, I don't see, unless there's someone that's going to come up, talk about the lighting. Okay? The lighting's been down there for years. So if you actually have a question.
Okay, it hasn't been down there for years.
It has been down there for years.
No, of the particular, particular lighting.
Okay, so Mr. Lorianzo, let me ask you a question. Is this particular lighting on this building we're talking about?
No, but you're
Is it on this property?
You're referencing
Is it on this property?
I don't know where your property extends to.
So you're you're trying to hear a petition, you don't even know where the property is?
I know where their property is. I don't know the extents of their property. You're referencing other variances that are given on that property as far as that area. Okay. Let me just say this. My opinion is, I don't think variances for height restrictions should be given out this easily. Suddenly, another fifty-five-plus foot building.
We're not voting yet, Mr. Lorianzo.
Okay.
So you can save that for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest his concerns? Because I I get the concern.
Go ahead.
I I think we, at the last meeting, we had someone come in and actually before the planning board and object about lighting. And they were confused because they were thinking about the the new NEB building, which is a different site, which is adjacent to to residential.
Correct. You're a hundred percent correct.
This is actually, this is not next to residential.
I know what this, I know what this site is.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't think you would get objections from residences because they're too far away. The one person, a butter who might object is Weaver's, Weaver Cove, because they're going to build residences on that property.
Yeah.
Been working with them extensively over the last several months. Gerard Galvin is here, and we've addressed their concerns about the building, its massing and things like that. So the one a butter who really has standing and a reason to to perhaps complain, we've worked with and we've solved their problems. So, but it's a legitimate
Okay.
I get it.
There are no residential neighbors to us at this site. Our only neighbor is the old Navy land that's that's not developed and still in the hands of the Navy and
It may be someday, but to me
All right, let's move on, please.
Any, any
I don't want to speak.
I'm sorry, do you have any, any other?
No, not at all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up Ben Cato, who's the engineer in the project.
Tell the truth?
I do.
Full name and address, please.
Benjamin Cato, C A I T O, Millstone Engineering.
And I'll just go through the the formalities, Mr. Chairman, in having him accepted as a witness. If he if he'd like, or the board can just accept him as a as an expert in the area of engineering.
We don't have a resume or anything.
Do we want, do you want?
Exhibit one? Mr. McGilvery?
Yes, please.
There's a one.
What is the exhibit?
It is.
Thank you.
Put that in the file previously.
Mr. Cato, can you explain your education within training with respect to engineering?
Sure, I have a degree in civil engineering. I've been practicing civil engineering for twenty-three years and registered in the state of Rhode Island for the sixteen. I've given testimony throughout the states of Rhode Island and Connecticut, zoning, planning, and town councils.
That's say be accepted as an expert in that area of civil engineering? Could I have a motion? Mr. Chairman, I moved that Mr. Cato be accepted as a expert in civil engineering?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to accept Benjamin Cato as an expert in civil engineering. All in favor? Aye, opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you just explain the design of the of the building and its sighting for the board?
Sure. The building is proposed as a hundred and fifty by a hundred and sixty feet. It's twenty-four thousand square feet, roughly square, as was mentioned earlier. The sighting of it is in the southwest area of the site, currently an impervious area used for boat storage. It's fifty-five feet from the closest property line, which puts it outside of all building setbacks. And it puts it outside of, there's an access easement that runs along that property line, puts it outside of that as well. That area of the site is also one of the lowest areas of the site elevation-wise. So when we're looking at building heights, it's not sitting at the top of the hill. It's down on the on the waterside, which is obviously the lower point to try to ease some of that height. The site will need water quality as part of development when it is moving forward, if it moves forward. And we'll be handling that with CRMC. The building is similar in scale and appearance to the existing buildings on site. I believe there was a an elevation that was delivered today, but there was, it's very similar to the elevation that was as part of your package that was delivered a month ago. And its coloring and its its height, it's the massing, as was mentioned, is slightly smaller because it went from a long, narrow building to a square building.
Good. I missed. No, I think that's that's good. And did you take part in the design of the the building and the rack, rack structure?
Uh, no, that was provided by the builder, the contractor.
In in your mind, is this the the least relief necessary for to achieve your design?
That is correct.
Okay. Has Teleria done any prior act that would have caused them to have to seek the variance?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And the requested relief, does it relate to the unique characteristics of the land, if not the land, the district itself, the waterfront district?
Yeah, this is one of the few areas in town where a building like this can fit from a zoning perspective.
And 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 serve the marine trades?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cato?
Questions?
I, I, it's in the flood zone. Does that not affect the construction?
Sure.
Are you doing it all breakaway and walls?
Yeah, would have to meet current building code for
All, all the walls are going to be breakaway or?
I can, I don't know that answer. But I do know that the the walls, to a certain extent, have to be breakaway. It is, it's around elevation eight, and the flood zone there is fourteen. So there's a significant portion of that wall that could be impacted by the water. And as we move forward with building permits, those items will be addressed.
So you're not going to try and raise the building even more because of the flood zone?
No, we are not.
Good points. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cato. So I'll just, if it's okay with the the board, Mr. Chairman, I'll just sum it up very quickly. This is a waterfront district. It is designed for the marine trades. In the comprehensive plan, it's called out as a place that is to be developed for the marine trades. And there are certain policies called out in the comprehensive plan to help existing businesses grow and remain competitive, especially in the marine trades. This is exactly that type of building. It's going to allow Hinkley to compete with these other rack buildings. As you heard, there's a a growing demand amongst the owners for internal storage, not just the external outside storage. So this will allow them to do that efficiently. It will allow them to to bring boats that are stored all over the island on site, reducing traffic. And whatever danger or inconvenience that might come from towing boats out on a West Main Road, it allows them to hire more people on site. So it really is a win for the town. It 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 meets the 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 goals of the comprehensive plan. And it also meets the requirements for a variance, particularly the one I'll I'll touch upon, that I think the witnesses touched upon, but perhaps not as not that strongly, is it it fits with the existing area. So this is not a fifty-five-foot building in an area where everything else is thirty-five. This is an industrial area where they've had large, massive buildings to serve the marine trades for many decades. So this is not a change at all in what NEB or Ben Boat Basin or whatever you want to Melville, whatever you want to call it. It's been this way for a long time. This isn't going to change it. And then just a moment, just a word about Weaver's Cove, because Gerard Galvin, who represents them, is is here together with his client. As I said, we've, they're the butter directly to the south, and they have their own plans for development of that property, mixed-use restaurant, marina, and Hinkley and Teleria are all for those plans. We've worked out some of the concerns they've had about the building, particularly its proximity to certain easements that they have over our property. And we're working to relocate some of those that in a way that will make it work better for both businesses. So they've really been a great partner in trying to help this property develop and have help an existing business in Portsmouth continue to be competitive. So that's my my summary. I think it meets all the elements of a variance. And I think it's a good idea for the the town and for existing business. So at that, unless you want to have any questions?
I have a kind of more general question. Is, are you building additional capacity? Or are you just building enough for, you know, to close those three satellite locations?
Um, I don't know. Will we close all three satellites?
No, this is, this building will be not by basically one of the satellite facilities.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
We have two others coming on that we're going to have permitted as well. That's the, those won't require height variances.
Got it.
So you might not see us on those. But it is, the idea is to bring more on site. Make the business more efficient.
Oh, any other question? Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
It begs the question, the potentially in the future, you'll build two more buildings? That's right. That won't, that will be within the thirty-five-foot That's correct. Will they also be dry, this kind of rack storage? No. They're going to be, are they going to be storage?
One will be storage, and the other one is going to house, house the trades that are that are existing with with upgraded shop spaces. We're currently occupying buildings that have been redeveloped since nineteen thirty.
Okay.
So there's there's a lot of reasons.
Great, thank you, sir. That that that's for the planning board for another day. We're, but that's the overall plan is to make this a existing business grow and be successful in Portsmouth.
Mr. Donovan, you good? So, Mr. Lorianzo, you good?
I'm wondering what the hardship is. It's a financial hardship, it seems, right?
No, we can't take that into consideration anymore. Can't take it into consideration anymore. All the ordinances, all those change first in January.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Butters or interested parties? Mr. Galvin, do you want to? Okay, so you guys are good. Okay.
There are people online.
Okay, let's hear. Who do we have?
I'm going to allow Tom Kinsley to talk.
Hello, Mr. Kinsley, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Kinsley. I know, are you in a butter?
Yeah, I'm kind of in a butter. I don't know what that means. How far I have to be, but my name is Tom Kinsley. And been a resident of Portsmouth for almost six years.
Mr. Kinsley, what's your address?
Three thirty-eight King Charles Drive. It's right next door to the marina in Kingsborough.
Mr. Kinsley, just so you know, this is, you're next door to the marina, not next door to the property that we're discussing tonight, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, but I had in view of the Newport Bridge from my house when I bought it.
Mr. Mr. Kinsley, hang on a minute. Just bear with me.
Okay.
Okay. If your issue is with the marina that's next to your property?
No, my my issue is with the marina in total. And I don't know when you give a variance on a property that's thirty-five feet and you're giving a variance for and you're giving a variance for one and three quarters times that height. Then I do not know what the impact that will have to me. Because the seventy-foot building they put up next door took my view away from the Newport Bridge.
Okay, Mr. Kinsley, just so you know, views are not rights. Okay, you do not have a right to a view.
And I, I understand that. And, but the purpose of zoning laws is to allow owners to purchase property and plan their usage of that property based on transparently available set of rules.
Okay, Mr. Kinsley.
For the waterfront.
Mr. Kinsley, Mr. Kinsley. What specific objection do you have to this petition? This particular building, which is south of you, well south of you, it's not even connected to the marina next to your, that abuts the King Grant. So I'm trying to find out what your objection is to that particular uh, building.
Rules for the waterfront areas state the building height is restricted to thirty-five feet. The rules were established so as to blend the waterfront zone in with the scale and the uses of the surrounding zones and the town. And a couple of years ago, as I mentioned, a variance was given to a neighboring building at the marina. And that building was allowed to double the height of the thirty-five feet to seventy feet. This building is gonna be one and three quarters times the height. We're not talking about a few feet here. Those are huge variants.
Mr. Kinsley, I'm just trying to find out what your objection is. And just state the objection, please.
I'm saying that this would be the fourth building in that waterfront area over the height restriction. When a variance given, the zoning law and its purpose is essentially overthrown. These huge variants are changing the zoned area from the waterfront marina. Scale and atmosphere. Despite what the gentleman said from the um the, uh, representing this company that wants to build the building. And to that of a major industrial complex zone. And that is not what is in, was intended for the comprehend, in the comprehensive plan, nor what the neighbors bought into when they made their decision to purchase and improve their own property.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Kinsley, I have to stop you there because you're running on to things that are not even directed specifically to this petition. If I'm to understand it correctly, you're objecting to a height, to the height variance.
Yes.
Period, correct?
But I'm also objecting to the fact that this is this is also um, not what was intended in that zone.
Mr. Kinsley, Mr. Kinsley, this is not to debate the zoning ordinance or to debate the new comprehensive community plan, which does address the waterfront district, okay? If you have an issue with the ordinance or the comp plan, then you need to address that with the town council. We don't write the ordinance, we just work with the ordinance, okay? We don't even enforce the ordinance at our level. Part of the ordinance and part of the comp plan allows an applicant, anyone, to come in and ask for anything from a use variance to a height variance, to a special use permit, and so on. And then it's up to this board, at this board's discretion, to either grant or deny those, okay? But it's not to de- debate how it came about. So for the record, just so you're on the record, you're opposed to the height variance of this building. And primarily you believe that it doesn't conform to the way the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written, correct?
That's, that's correct, and I also wanna make one other point.
Okay.
And I can't give examples that are not hearsay. They're actual examples. And the request is they consider what type of neighbors the collectively the marina has been to Portsmouth. Because I would think you, that you would want to give ver- not give variance or are able to give a variance to a good neighbor than a poor neighbor.
Okay, well, Mr. Kinsley, thank you for that. Thank you for your information. I will also say this. Um, and again, has nothing to do with this petition, but that particular building you're talking about. Um, not on this property. Uh, I don't recall any opposition to that 'cause I was on that hearing. There were no butters or interested parties to that that came that night, just so you're aware.
Excuse me, which, which, what meaning are, are you referring to?
The one that was at, what's, was New England Boat Works at the time, the one that's closest to King's Grant.
Well, I'll tell you very quickly why I was not that at the meeting. Because number one, I was not notified because I was a couple of tens of um, couple of hundred feet away. And so I did not have to be notified per the rules of Portsmouth. And um, I would have been there had it been notified. Now I get uh, emails for every committee meeting that Portsmouth has, every board. And um, for the sole purpose of voicing my opinion uh, about the height restrictions at that marine. And also to talk about how poor of a neighbors they are collectively, and I can be more than happy to give you.
Okay, Mr. Kinsley. Totally understand, again for the record, the people that are poor neighbors to you, or you are accusing of being poor neighbors is not the applicant that's before this.
That is not true. That is not true.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kinsley. Appreciate.
You're shutting me up, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kinsley, Mr. Kinsley.
You're shutting me up.
We're not debating anymore. Thank you. We're gonna go on to the next person.
I'm moving Tom Grebe up.
Yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
You, you can, Mr. Grebe.
Um.
Address.
I, I, I honestly agree with some of what Mr. Kinsley was, was stating.
Mr. Gre- Mr. Grebe, Mr. Grebe. While you move on, could we have your address, please?
One ten Sayre Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe.
Uh, I, I do agree with what Miss, Mr. Kinsley was saying. Uh, that there, uh, the, the, the number of variances, the, now we're up to four uh, of height restrictions are changing the character of the area from what was intended with the marina. Uh, it was a, to be a marina area and atmosphere. Now, it is an industrial atmosphere and it's getting more so by these large buildings. I ask that you think hard about granting such a major variance. I mean, we're talking double here, almost double in this case, in double in other cases. It seems to me that the only hardship would be based on financial gain for the company. The marina wants to, the marina wants to stack three boat levels high rather than two boat levels high.
Mr. Grebe, the, Mr. Grebe. The board, the board, according to the new state regulations, the board cannot even take into consideration anymore whether the variance request is for any financial gain. That's.
Well, you should, well, then you should look at, Mr. Knott, you should look at what you put on your own damn website. It says how a variance is evaluated. And one of the criteria on your website is financial gain. And it says it can't be based on financial gain.
So, Mr. Grebe, hang on a sec, hang on a second. First of all, it's not my website. It's the town's website, it's your website, it's my website. The zoning ordinance. Wait a minute, he's, Mr. Grebe, hang on, I'm not done yet, okay? First of all, the ordinance has to be rewritten, but the ordinance can't be rewritten until the comprehensive community plan was rewritten, which was just rewritten. The state regulations just came out the first of January, okay? So all of that is in process. And I apologize, that's what's there, but all one has to do is if they do their total research, they will find what the new regulations are, okay? Once.
What are they?
Look them up on the state website. I am not gonna sit here tonight and explain to you what all the changes are.
On the website, what's on your website.
Mr. Grebe, Mr. Grebe, I'm gonna, you know, Mr. Grebe, I'm gonna cut you off. I'm gonna ask you one question. What is your opposition to this particular petition?
The fact that there is a, a, a variance for a higher than, uh, the higher level of building than is allowed in the present zoning um, regulations. And that the, the, there is certainly room to build two buildings lower and smaller for the same boat capacity. Therefore, the request is not the least relief required.
Uh, Mr., that's also under the new requirements is you can no longer go by the least relief necessary. We're bound by the state, okay? We're bound by the state regulations.
You're gonna, you're gonna do what you're gonna do. You're, you, you, you don't care about the people that are going to be affected by this. I understand.
So, Mr. Grebe, could you tell me?
Very disappointed.
Mr. 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 Grebe, tell me how you are going to be impacted if this is granted. Uh, that's what I'm trying to find out. You live, you don't even live within view of this building.
That is wrong.
No, that's not wrong.
Absolutely wrong.
I've been down, I was down right at your house about two weeks ago. And then I was over at the applicant's place. So, no, I'm not incorrect.
I, I believe you are because that's part of, of, of my view. When I bought my house.
Mr. Gre- Mr. Grebe, views are not rights. Views are not rights.
That is, that is correct.
Right, so. And it blocked your view, it's not a right.
What I'm telling you is, when I bought my house, I looked at what I could see. And I saw that the zoning said that the height allowed was thirty-five feet. I knew that I could, my house is, if you've been there, it's up fairly high.
Yep.
I can see fairly far, and the thirty-five feet would not obstruct my view.
But again.
You are now building buildings. No, will you listen to me, please?
I'm trying to.
You are now, you are now building buildings. Two, one and a, one and a half, one and three quarters, two times as high as that thirty-five feet. I bought my house according to the zoning rules, looking at the zoning rules, accepting that as what I was going to deal with. The variances that are being given, and I believe they're not being given for the right reasons because they are not the least relief required.
We can't go by that anymore. I already told you that.
I know you told me that, but that's not what your website says.
Mr. Grebe, Mr. Grebe, it's my fault. This is Leah Hitchen talking. I'm the town planner. I take full responsibility for not updating our town website. I, I take responsibility. I apologize.
Well, what does that do for us?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
It, it, yes.
I'm Mr. Grebe, I, Mr. Grebe, Mr. Grebe. Please, wait a minute, Mr. Furell, go ahead.
Uh, um, it seems to me that, that someone, you know, Mr. Grebe purchased property some time ago. Expected those um, um, zoning regulations to be in effect perpetuity forever.
Right.
And through the democratic process, they have changed. So, so regardless of the desire to live by last year's regulations, that's not a point of fact. We have new regulations.
That's correct.
And so the, the, the argument that, that, you know, in, in X number of years ago, these were the rules. They're different now.
Right.
We, so, I would like to say that the rule hasn't changed as far as the building, like, we have other rule changes as far as that. But the zoning ordinance that limits the building height in that area has not changed. That's why everyone's here today.
Don't forget to add the comprehensive community plan and all this too. You can't look just at the ordinance. You have to look at the comp plan too. That all plays into this.
The comp plan.
The longer.
I'm still on.
Mr. Orellano, with all due respect.
Change that.
The longer you sit on this board, the more you will become knowledgeable as to what you really have to do versus just paper, okay? So, please, bear with some of the people that have done this a long time, all right? It's not just a simple thirty-five, like we said. It's, we can't take the least relief necessary and we can't take financial impact into consideration anymore, okay? Then you have to look at the comp plan. What does the comp plan say about development in that area, what we're supposed to do? That all plays into this. Okay?
Mr. Knott, this is Mr. Grebe again.
Tell me the comp plan is saying that grant variances to help be height variances to promote what's in the uh, comp plan as far as business development.
It doesn't get specific to height variances. I'm sorry, Mr. Grebe, go ahead.
All right, how? I, I, I would like to know, 'cause I was on the comprehensive plan committee. I would like to know how you think the comprehensive plan has changed the zoning in the waterfront area to allow height variances well above, I mean, we're talking double. What?
Mr. 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 Grebe.
Height variance is.
This, Mr. Grebe. Uh, and where, as with Mr. Kinsley, we're not gonna sit here and debate all of that tonight, okay? Very simply, state your objection. Your objection is, you're objecting to the granting of a height variance 'cause you don't believe that criteria meets the variance request as listed in the ordinance. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And I don't see how, I don't see how you're, you're, you're invoking the comprehensive plan changes what I've just said.
I, I, I told you, I'm not even gonna debate it. I'm not gonna do it. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Do you have anybody else?
No.
Okay. All right. Before we vote, um, voting on this will be myself, Mr. Furell, Ms. Horowitz, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Lorianzo. Mr. Kelly, you're the alternate, so you won't be voting on this one, okay? Does anybody want to propose any conditions on this? Mr. Lorianzo, this is your opportunity to handle any lighting issues right now.
Okay, if it is approved, I would like to see dark sky lighting, down lighting, full cutoff, dark, dark sky lighting applied on this building, not horizontally placed spotlights.
Perfect, because if you didn't, I was going to.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, so, a condition has been proposed by Mr. Lorianzo that all, and I'm going to ask to, if you will amend that, any lighting on that building, correct? Any new lighting on that building?
On the building, and I don't know if we can say in the parking lot area as well.
We can't, we have to, we can only address the building, but the building's a lot of time of the biggies, so.
Yeah.
Do you want to say something?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is okay with that condition.
Wow, it kind of doesn't matter whether he is or isn't. Because if it's approved, it's, you know.
I, I thought I'd reduce further debate if I could.
It, it doesn't have any impact on your lighting either, so.
Yeah, okay, so, Mr. Lorianzo, so, any external lighting on the proposed building, if the building's approved, shall point at a ninety-degree downward angle and be of the dark sky, full cutoff lighting, okay? Got it. Okay, I have a condition that's been proposed, could I have a motion to accept that condition?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconds, place a condition by Mr. Lorianzo, that any external lighting on this building, should it be approved, be pointed ninety degrees at a downward angle and be full cutoff lighting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. We haven't voted on the petition yet, we just put a condition on it. All right. So, Tolar Real Estate Holdings is before the board for tax assessors map forty-three, lot five, which is located in the waterfront district. They're proposing a fifty-five-foot building where thirty-five is allowed, which is a twenty-foot variance height request. Proposed building will be in, keeping in scale with finish of the existing buildings. Purpose of the building is to, for use of what's called dry stack storage, where you store bolts in multiple tiers. They've given testimony that they are going to be losing some of their external offsite storage, and have now like to take the opportunity to incorporate it and bring it back into their own site. So, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, this is a tough one. I vote to deny the, the variance. The ordinance restricts building height in order to limit visual pollution and limit detrimental effects to neighbors. So, the, the applicant's rationale that this building will improve the efficiency of operation is insufficient to counter the apparent visual impact that the building would have. The building has, you know, no, no architectural significance, it's just going to be a big box, looking a lot like a self-storage building that we don't have in Portsmouth. What I would prefer to see in this case is that the applicant lobbies the town council to change the regulations rather than adopt a piecemeal approach to variances to kind of grow the facility in, in a piecemeal fashion. If the industry requires these larger buildings for this, for its success, then there are other ways to, to go about this. I also believe that the, the fifty-foot, fifty-five-foot building to accommodate three stacks, a, a similar number of boats could be accommodated with a lower, larger building, bigger footprint, lower height. So, so there are other ways to skin this cat that do not require the fifty-five-foot proposed height, so, Mr. Chairman, I vote to deny the application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve the application, I believe that it's in a, it's surrounded by sheds and other type buildings, it's not in a residential district, so I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
I vote to approve it, I was down at the site, there are other buildings that are very close to that height already. And I think that in terms of operating the business, it seems reasonable, so I'm going to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lorianzo?
I, I am voting not to approve.
Okay, for reasons.
Previously stated by the village chair, yeah, by Ben.
By Mr. Furell, okay, thank you. Well, I agree with Mr. Furell, that it is a tough one. And I'm kind of on the fence about it, and I understand the need for dry stack storage, I understand the need to bring what storage you lose elsewhere back on site. But, and there's always a but there, I didn't hear any testimony on the total number of boats at thirty-five feet versus at fifty feet, what the difference is. But what I did hear is testimony that there would be the room for two additional buildings there. That tells me that if they really needed this dry stack storage, they've got ample room down there to do it without asking for a variance. So, although I agree with Ms. Horowitz and Mr. Donovan that the proposed building is similar to many of the others that are down there, it doesn't necessarily mean that it should be granted because of those. I'm going to vote to deny, I think the applicant has, has other opportunities down there to get their dry stack storage they want without having to exceed the height limit. So, in the new rules, it's a majority either way, so it has been denied, so, all right? Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.